Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, October 15, 2024. Kim, may we have a roll call, please?
Thank you, Council President. Council President Cor.
Here.
Councilmember Boyce.
Yeah.
Councilmember Boyd.
Here.
Councilmember Fincher.
Here.
Councilmember Larmour. Councilmember Michaud.
Here.
Councilmember Troutner.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Okay, next item is agenda approval. May we have a motion to approve the agenda, please, unless there are any changes?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. All right, and next up, we have approval of minutes for October 1, 2024. We have a motion, please.
Excuse me. So move.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. All right, payment of bills. You should have received that in your email. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. All right, next up, we have our write-offs of uncollectible accounts, and we have Molly here with our finance department. Welcome. This is an annual presentation we usually get.
It is, yes. Here I am again. All right. Good afternoon, Council President Cor and council members. I am Molly Bartlamay. I am the customer service manager in our finance department. So as you mentioned, every year, finance comes forward with a request to write off some delinquent amounts. So this year, finance is requesting your authorization to write off $74,232.26 of uncollectible receivables. This amount represents 2.75% of the city receivables balance, and $2,258.68 is in interest and finance charges. So the question is, when do we bring these amounts forward? So our standard practice is, we bring delinquent bills forward when they become three years, not including the current year delinquent. And so that's why in your attachment that you'll see most of these write-off amounts go back to 2020. And again, that three-year rule, it's a standard practice to give us some consistency, but there are certainly exceptions to that. You'll see the utility billing amounts, there's some amounts that went back further than that. I can tell you that all of those had some kind of, they were all related to a bankruptcy, and I know that staff was looking to make sure that there was no chance of collection on any of those items, and that those bankruptcies had been discharged, and there was no chance that we'd even collect a portion of that. So all these amounts that you do see that are brought forward, it's the departments and finance working together to determine what is brought forward to you. I do want to mention COVID. I guess I don't want to mention COVID, but I think that it's important that we do. So this yearly process, we even brought these forward during COVID. So back during COVID, the amounts that we brought forward again were from three years prior. So now, again, those amounts that you see tonight, we're getting to 2020. So I think we're going to start to see those impacts of COVID. This year, for some comparison versus last year, the amount this year is up $11,612 from last year. So in 2023, we wrote off $62,620. So again, we are up a bit from last year. For more reference, in 2022, our write-off amount was $113,161. In 2021, it was $110,683. Do you want to note, though, that part of that decrease can be attributed to how code enforcement fees are billed? Some of those were moved to police. So it's only building enforcement, code enforcement fees that go through the AR process. The other fees are now handled through the municipal courts. So since those aren't billed through this process, that's an amount that we're not, no longer going to see going through the write-off process. Also want to point out that this in no way forgives that debt. We can still collect it. So of that amount tonight, $59,745.66 has been turned over to collections. So the only items that didn't go to collections is that utility billing amount, and then there were some taxes that were deemed uncollectible. And again, our goal is always to collect these amounts. We don't want to send people to collections before we send an account to collections. There's multiple steps, letters, invoices, second letters, 30-day warnings. So again, these items, there's been much outreach before we've got to this point. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Troutner, followed by Councilmember Boyce, please.
Thank you, Council President. How successful are we when accounts go to collections? Do we see much come from that, or?
I believe, I just checked, and we're at 9% to 10% is our average. So we get some. I mean, definitely not the amount we'd like to see, but certainly. And we recently met with our collections company just to get a better insight of what their process looks like. And they did say, you know, they reach out to everybody, but unlike us, they have the systems, the algorithms to tell, to see who's most likely that they're going to collect those funds from. So definitely, it was interesting to hear that, you know, how they handle those.
And then we pay a fee for that, so we don't technically get that full amount that is owed to us, but we get a portion.
We, they get the, more of the interest that's charged on that. So the city does have the ability to collect back what our original billing amount was. But yeah, there's definitely, it's not, it's not as good as if we would have collected it upfront.
Right, but it's something. Thank you.
Something.
Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam President. You answered most of my questions. For every thorough job in your presentation.
Oh, thank you.
I'm just checking each one off. It's a good job. So we do have a collection agency that go out, and they, that we pay, they get a percentage of whatever they collect, right, pretty much?
Right.
Okay.
They do, yeah.
Okay. You answered my question. Very thorough. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Molly. I'll make a motion. I move to authorize the mayor to write off uncollectible accounts owed to the city in the amount of $74,232.26, subject to final approval of the finance director.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. All right, next up, we have our August 2024 financial report. Michelle Ferguson.
All right. Good afternoon, Council. I'm Michelle Ferguson, and I will be presenting the August 2024 monthly financial report. Highlighted on this slide are the sales tax revenues. So through August, the 2024 revenues are about $225,000 lower than at this time last year. So even though sales tax are lower than in 2023, they are coming in above budget, and it's estimated that it will be, those revenues will be about $700,000 over budget by year end. Then highlighted on this slide are the utility tax revenues. And as you can see, the last few months, the revenues for 2024 are coming in higher than they were in 2023, and higher than the budget. So to kind of switch things up a little bit, here is a visual of the different utility taxes within the general fund. That top percentage number is the difference in 2023 actuals to the 2024 estimated actuals. And then the number below that is what is estimated to be the 2024 actuals. So all of the utility tax revenues are expected to come in over budget, as well as higher than in 2023, with the exception of gas and cable. Gas is expected to be about $350,000 under budget, and cable is expected to be about $175,000 under budget at year end. So highlighted on this slide are, in yellow up at the top for revenues, so, sorry to go back. At this point in time, eight months have passed, so as in straight-line method, you would expect 66.7% of the budget to either be received or spent. And you can see, highlighted in yellow, those categories for property tax, BNO tax, and admissions tax are not quite hitting that target. That's not because we don't expect to see those, that is because property tax, those are receded in April and October, so we just have only gotten half of them so far. Same with BNO tax. Those are receded quarterly, the year, the month after the quarter ends, so we've only gotten half of those so far this year. And then highlighted in blue, you can see those are well over the target, so we have no concerns with those. And then under expenditures, fire is highlighted because it is just slightly over the percent of budget of what you would expect to see. But that is just because there is a one-time payment that we do for the fire insurance premiums. That's for over $400,000, so that kind of skews that number. So overall, we're expected, fire is expected to be about $200,000 under budget at year end. So there's not a whole lot of changes for adjusted budgets or estimated actuals from the last time I presented this report, but a couple of ones to point out, criminal justice, those revenues, the fund, the revenues just keep going up and up. So to kind of give you a visual on what makes up those revenues, there's a bunch of little funds within that larger fund. So criminal justice sales tax revenue, motor vehicle excise tax revenue, seized funds, goes-on-camera funds, red light camera funds, and the opioid settlement funds, as well as others. So others, kind of like interest income, are little smaller revenues that we receive. So the big change from '23 to '24 is going to be for the red light cameras. Those are because extra cameras were added at the end of last year, so the revenues have gone up quite a bit since then. Highlighted on this slide is debt service, not because there's anything wrong with it, but just pointing out how the 2023 actuals differ from 2024. You know, debt kind of keeps going along. But some debt is being paid off at the end of this year, so it's a lower amount, and then it completely gets retired at the end of this year, and that is for the 2015 LTGO bonds. And then on this slide, the insurances, just wanted to go over those again. Revenues for workers' comp and liability, those, the reason they're slightly over budget estimates are because of interest income. And then property insurance, as mentioned before, expenditures are expected to be about $140,000 lower than the budget, and that's because we had been seeing double-digit increases for the property insurance, but because we had those single digits this year, we're expecting that to be about $140,000 less. Any questions?
Any questions or comments for Michelle?
I actually just have a question, but this is more probably budget-related. So we're anticipating our sales tax to be higher than projected. Did we take that in, I don't remember in the budget, but did we take that in consideration for next year?
For next year, the budget for sales tax is to pretty much be pretty consistent. We didn't really increase it more than just, just a little bit, just because we're expecting to kind of see this as a slight decline, but not anything major. And since we're seeing it about $700,000 over budget, we figured there'll be a little bit of cushion in case we do see a slight decline in the next year.
Okay, thank you. That is all I had. No questions. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you so much. All right, next item. We have agreement with Dynamic Language Center, and we have Maria. Welcome.
So hi, Council. My name is Maria Tisok. I am the recent Equity Coordinator. I will also be wearing the hat of Language Access and Title VI Coordinator, as you can see throughout the presentation. And just as a quick reminder, Title VI is nondiscrimination on race, color, national origin, and by proxy, that also includes Language Access. So that's why you will see Title VI and Language Access referenced kind of interchangeably throughout the presentation. And so I am here to give you an update on the Language Access Plan and the implementation of that. And so with the Ling, or through our Race and Equity Strategic Plan, we heard from our community that Language Access was the priority area that we should focus on. So that is why we started with that in the past year. So I can go ahead and move on to a brief overview of the agenda. So just kind of talking about where we are in the process of Language Access implementation, where we're going to be going with it, and then highlight some key achievements of the Title VI team and some of those achievements thus far. We'll see the results of them through the Language Access, or Language Line data reports, and then I'll be sharing some next steps. So this here is just a quick, high-level overview of all of the key milestones that the Language Access team, Title VI team, have implemented in the last year. So in 2023, August 2023, we went ahead and assembled the Title VI team. That consists of one person from each department, so they are the liaisons for Language Access needs. And they ensure citywide consistency through translation or interpretation of vital information that goes out in print materials or online. And then we've also centralized Language Access through a SharePoint site that I will share in the next couple of slides, and also through Language Access Resource Guides that were developed with the Title VI team. And then we also created an RFP for a translation vendor that could help us translate the vital documents that the city has indicated. So this team was a really big, was key to go ahead and select what the vital documents look like for the city. And so we kind of were doing that the past year, along with some training and so forth. So I think I can just click this button, and it will play a quick overview and a demo of what that Title VI landing page looks like. And so this really helps staff answer those questions of like, what is Language Access? What are the top languages that are spoken at the city? What is interpretation versus translation? And it helps staff, it just walks them through all of the processes for that. Additionally, it helps them with writing and playing language. So what does it look like when I need to translate a document and I need to write for it? So goes in-depth with that. I feel like this deserves its own presentation. I can show, I can share the link to the SharePoint site. This is just a quick overview of what that looks like for staff. And I am just really proud of this site because this is something that I wish we had when I started here, but I'm really happy that we were able to centralize a lot of this work just in the past year. And this is another resource that was created with the Title VI team. So this is a Language Access landing page on the website. So we knew that we needed to centralize the work internally and also externally. So this basically just walks residents through how to access Google Translate to navigate through our website, what are the top languages that are spoken at the city, and if their questions are answered while using Google Translate, they can also submit a language assistance form, which will come to me, and it'll just share that they need, whether if it's an interpreter for a specific event or translation of a specific document, then I will work directly with the department liaison to make sure that we provide that information in language for our residents. And moving on to the tools that allow us to provide in-language resources. So this year, we purchased these tools to allow us to communicate with our residents. So we have 15 Pocket Talk devices that were distributed to all of the departments and divisions. And this is a small device that allows us to communicate with a resident in up to 84 languages. And this is for more like, like, quick conversational information. And this is some, a tool that the clerk's office uses quite frequently. The, why am I blinking out? The courts use quite frequently as well. And they, this really helps them just answer those frequently asked questions that they get from residents in real time. And then we also purchased 10 Language Line self-help kiosks. Some of them are on wheels, and the other ones are on tabletop stands like you see here. And that really just depends on the department and division. So if you go to the customer service area, you will see the tabletop stands, and that allows residents to go up to the iPad and select the language that they'd like, and it directly connects them to a live interpreter. And we see the usage of these two devices in different ways, just depending on the nature of the department. And so an observation that I had was, you know, just depending on the nature of that department, they typically focus on using Pocket Talk, like the clerk's office, as I mentioned, it's those frequently asked questions. But in like the police department, they focus on using the Language Line self-kiosk just because of the information that is a little bit more vital, so they have to use a, an interpreter for that. And so moving on to language data. So we are frequently asked, what are the top languages at the city? And we rely on these four data sets that show us what are the top languages that are spoken in Kent. So we have King County Health Department data, Kent School District data, American Community Survey, and internal Language Line data. I would say we rely most heavily on the Kent School District data, just because that is more Kent-specific, as well as the American Community Survey. And we see that the top languages that are spoken at the Kent School District are very, very similar to the ones that are spoken at the city through the American Community Survey. And they are tracking those emerging languages, so we want to make sure that we're also tracking those emerging languages, so that we know what services and what resources our residents need, and what language they need them in. And I will go ahead and move on to Language Line data. So we are trying to push a little bit more on the collection of internal data so that we know who are, who are our residents, and what languages are they speaking when they come to the city, or when we go to their communities. And so this is the Language Line data platform where they do a great job of making it look super nice for us. On the right side here, you can see the different languages that we have used through Language Line. And OPI is just over-the-phone interpreting, which is what we mostly use Language Line for. The other way that we use Language Line is also, it's a video format, and so that covers our ADA needs. So for folks who speak American-style language, they're able to connect with somebody who signs. And so on the right side, you can see kind of the trend of how much more we're using Language Line. We see in the past year, there has been an increase of 43.3% of calls, which is amazing, total of 4,405 calls. That means that that is 4,000 residents are receiving in-language services, which is amazing. And then we see that the police department, right at the bottom, they are the ones that are doing most of the calls. And that makes a lot of sense because they are going to communities, and that they're reaching them at where they are. The city of Kent as a whole, the campus, we have 538 calls that we've made so far. And then you see at the very top of those bars, the blue just signifies the video interpreting, but most of it has been over-the-phone interpreting.
Maria, quick question.
Yeah.
So on the last slide, there's Kent Police Department on there twice.
Yeah, so there's Kent Police Department as a whole, so that's like the patrol unit, and then there is a different division. I believe it's for their, sorry, it's patrol, and then there's the, I don't think it's the jail. I believe it's, I will take a look at that and hand that back to you.
Thank you.
But we're also working on consolidating those contracts, because there's currently two with the city. So the police department has one, and then we have one, so we're trying to consolidate them into one. them into one. So that is still in process, but we're able to see the data reports all in one platform. So I will look into that and get back to you. And so for next steps, we are going to continue to normalize the usage of language accessibility, and that's actually a real photo of me. And continue to provide in-language resources for residents and continue to develop more resources for staff members. Sorry, I already skipped over my notes. And to summarize, we have increased the Language Line interpretation services, and we hope to keep doing that by expanding translation services, which is why we went into contract or we're wanting to go into contract with Dynamic Languages that will help us translate vital documents into the top six languages. And additionally, we have been receiving a lot of more requests to translate documents from different departments. So I want to create a more robust way for me to collect that data so that next time I do a presentation, I can show you exactly how many requests have been made from each department. And I want to continue to standardize implementation of Language Access and also really just let the public know that these, these services are available to them. So normalizing and public dissemination of language resources. And yeah, I would say we've come a long way, and there's, you know, a long way to go, but I'm just really proud of the key achievements that we've been able to make with the Title VI team. I used to be one of those kids that used to translate for my parents growing up, and so being able to create these types of plans and being able to eliminate barriers for residents to access services has been really rewarding, so I hope to continue doing that. And that is it.
Thank you, Maria. Councilmember Frencher followed by Councilmember Michelle, please.
Thank you. This is an excellent service. What are the, outside of police, what are some examples of things that they're calling about? I imagine in parks, or there'd be something about the programs or customer service and bills. What are some of the questions that we get asked or information that they want?
So I, I can also dig a little bit deeper into that Language Line data, and it can show us what departments are calling more and like what are their top languages. But I would say for like the Police Department, like the lobby, it's typically to go over a specific document, and if they need to sign something or waiver of consent or something, they have an interpreter to help them do that and to understand what that document is. Additionally, like the Permit Center, just any questions about codes or anything like that, they're able to connect with an interpreter that would, you know, is certified so that they know that they're receiving information that is good, good translations and interpretation.
Yeah. Councilmember Michelle, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Maria, thank you so much for this presentation and for gathering all this data and for beginning to implement this program. I'm wondering if we have those kiosks at like the Kent Commons and the Finance Desk?
Yeah, so we have those kiosks at the Finance Desk, so they have two iPads, one on each side, and then the Kent Commons also has one, but theirs is on the rolling stand. The Kent Senior Center also has a rolling stand one. The PD Lobby has a tabletop stand, and then, yeah, so they have, they are dispersed throughout the different campuses of the city. And I would say we've been receiving a lot of really good feedback on the Language Line kiosks as well as the Pocket Talk devices. And again, it's not one size fits all. Different departments have different needs of how they interact with residents, and so I'm really excited that we were able to bring both of those tools for staff members.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyes, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Hey, looking at your timeline from August 23 to August 24, you look like you got a lot of stuff accomplished, which is good. For your, your next step, will you also pull a timeline referencing to your next steps?
Yeah, so a quick timeline on like the translation of the vital documents. So since we are using ARPA funds for that, we're hoping to use ARPA funds for it, we have in the contract worked with Dynamic Languages to make sure that the translation of the vital documents are completed by March of 2025. So that already is a, you know, an achievement there. And then as far as the trainings and all of that goes, I hope to develop those in the next couple of months, but I can definitely provide a more thorough timeline for upcoming presentations.
And then for your staff training, what did that look like?
Yeah, so for, in February, that is when we went ahead and got all of those tools, like the Language Line kiosks and the Pocket Talk devices. And so when I went ahead and distributed them to the departments, I also did a training on the Language Access Resource Guide that was developed so that they knew like if a resident comes in, what are the resources that I have at the moment available to me? And so we kind of went through that training, and that was mostly for customer-facing staff members. And I plan to develop a training where all, all staff members can opt in to learn a little bit more about the Language Access resources that are available. So maybe some sort of like video training where new staff members can go ahead and learn about those services.
So is this training required, or is it just?
No, so that one was mostly just for, well, it was required for the customer-facing staff members, but we also did a Title VI mandatory training that was through NeoGov at the beginning, or it was December of 2023. And so that just gave staff members an understanding of what we had to do to stay in compliance with Title VI. But as, as far as the Language Access one goes, that one was mostly for the customer-facing employees.
And then you got 100%?
Yeah, I would say so. I also left the resource guides. I would say, yeah, I would say maybe completion rate probably 90% because I made sure to schedule them with each department head, and we kind of did in-person training and overview, and they had the opportunity to ask questions. With the Title VI liaisons, I also get a lot of questions about it, so I'm able to work directly with the staff member that has questions about the resources.
And this is my last comment. I think for the initial training, that's probably good, but to me, I'm more concerned about the on gone because, you know.
Yeah.
It's not a one-and-done type of thing, right?
Right, yeah. No, I agree with that.
So I'm more concerned about just implementing this here and being able to sustain it. It's, I don't know where I see questions at.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what we'll work towards developing is just more of that standardized training. So when there is a new staff member, they can opt in to taking that training and just doing it more consistently. You know, I can go ahead and put that on my schedule as well so that I can work directly with the, the staff members.
It's new and also existent too, right? Could we want to kind of?
Right.
Make it reputable?
Yep. Thank you.
Councilwoman Boyd, please.
Yes, Maria, thank you. Excellent presentation. I was looking at your Language Access landing page, and on here is, there's a button that it says pay online. Is there a cost for this, for individuals to use this?
No, so online, we are able to leverage the Google Translate, which is completely free to us. And so that allows folks to just select the language that they want, and they can navigate the website. So any forms that are on the website and created by the website CMS, they're able to translate those. For like PDFs, that is what we're working towards of like translating those vital documents so that we can upload them to the website, and they can access the, the different documents. But as far as the Google Translate goes, that is completely free.
Okay, I had to ask the question because I saw that button. Thank you, though.
You're welcome. I think that is for bill payment, Councilmember. Councilmember Frencher, please.
Thank you. Do you happen to know if any of the, any of our, any of our divisions who go out into the field such as economic development or parks, doing community engagement, do you know if they have used these out in the field yet and how that's worked?
Yeah, so we have given Parks and we've let know, let the other divisions know about the Pocket Talk devices, and so Parks has tried it, tried it out. I think they said it was, it was great, but a lot of it is, I would say, yeah, I don't think they've had like an actual opportunity to go out and use it in the community, but those folks who have been using it really say great things about it. But Parks Division, they have two of those devices, and it helps them with the engagement aspect.
Thank you. You'd like to know more about how that's going after they've had a chance?
Yeah.
To use it a while and collect some data?
Yeah, I can make note of that.
Possibly. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Maria. I'm just going to make a few comments, and I was one of those kids who was translating for their parents. We still do. Still do. My kids are doing that now, so yeah, this is great. I remember when we, when I first got on council, and it was something I've been pushing for, so I'm excited that we are starting to see. And looking at the data points you provided, I'm glad that our community is actually using these resources, so thank you so much. And the other question, well, not really a question, just to comment about like the great work you have done on this project, and we're looking forward to the progress. I would like to use some of these devices just to see how accurate they are because I feel I've seen some documents and some printouts that have been in Punjabi that haven't been 100% accurate. So that is my only concern with that.
Yeah, no, yeah, we have a Pocket Talk device that we can let you borrow, and that you can let us know whether or not like the Punjabi is good for interpretation. As far as the translation of the documents, we're not really relying on those tools. That's why we're wanting to rely more on the certified translators through like the Dynamic Language Contract, because we know those things happen, especially if it's a language that, you know, is written left to right. A lot of the times, our word is not set up to do that, and so you have to do that yourself. So yes, I, I agree with that.
And then I think that is all I have, so thank you so much for.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'll make the motion. All right, I move to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Dynamic Language Center, LTD, for document translation services, subject to final terms acceptable to Chief Administrative Officer and City Attorney.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you so much, Maria.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Public Safety. Councilmember Boyes, please.
Thank you, Madam President. We do have a presentation here from Commander Wheeler, and this is around a cooperative purchase agreement. Commander Wheeler, sir.
Hello. Thank you, Council President, Council. I'm Commander Matt Wheeler with the Police Department. I'm one of the patrol commanders. So we are requesting approval to switch from our existing vendor to a new vendor for ballistic vests and carriers. The new vendor is already on the state bid, and we use existing budget and funds already allocated.
That's what I like, short and sweet.
Yeah, that's it. Get to the point for you guys.
All right. I'm sure we read through this, sir. We're saving money at the end of the day, right?
Yes, correct. Really some of the reasons, officer comfort, more durability, and cost saving, we'd be saving about $200 per vest. And it's a little bit quicker turnaround. They're telling us about a 40-day turnaround from when we get measured to when we actually get them delivered. Right now, it's about six months, what it takes.
Those vests are heavy. How much do they weigh roughly?
Oh, gosh. This one with everything on it, I'd say probably 15-ish pounds.
And the new one, it weighs?
New one's a little bit lighter, and it's a little bit more streamlined in terms of where we can place our items at. So same color, same, the same navy blue color that we currently have.
It's kind of cool. This weekend, I was out and about with my grandson, and we ran across one officer, and he actually let him try, oh, one of the vests, and he weighed 80 pounds, and he almost hit the ground.
I've let my, my sons try it, and yeah, same thing, weighing down.
It's pretty heavy, so that's nice. So, all right. Any question, team, for Commander Wheeler? Hey, CNN, I'm going to make a motion, please. I move to authorize a police chief to purchase law enforcement equipment through a cooperative purchase agreement. The State Department Enterprise Service with Angel Armor LLC, if those purchase are within the city established budget, excuse me, and made during the term of the corporate contract, including any authorized extensions.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? CNN, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show, unanimous pass. Madam President, I turn back over to you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyes. Next up, we have Public Works. Councilmember Frencher, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. We're going to have Melissa Dahl from Public Works tell us about the King County Flood Control Subregional Opportunity Grants.
A little bit of a mouthful every time. Yes, hello, Melissa Dahl, Public Works, Design Engineering. Hello, thank you for having me. So today, I'm here to bring an info-only item regarding the King County Flood Control District Subregional Opportunity Fund. We bring it to you every year, so it might be a little bit of repeat information, but it's always good news. So this year, we're proposing to take our 2025 allocation and apply it to two projects. The two projects, you actually coincidentally ended up being right next door to each other. Woodford Avenue North Storm Connection and then the Mill Creek Little Property Flood Plane Reconnection. To go over each project, Woodford Avenue North Storm Connection, picture on the left shows the bird's eye view of the location. It's located at Woodford Avenue, just north of James Street. If you're familiar with where Mill Creek Middle School is, it's just north of there next to the James Street Pump Station. What we're proposing for this area is to actually basically retrofit the existing storm infrastructure out on Woodford, both on the east side of the road and the west side of the road. Presently, the system connects onto the west side of the road and then goes down to the line that's out on James Street and then circles back to the pump station. It's a little bit redundant, and so we're instead going to have it go directly into the James Street Pump Station. That way, it doesn't have to compete with water that pours out on James Street. It'll be able to get pumped out of the system faster. So we actually did receive some money for this during the 2025 alloc- or sorry, 2023 allocation. So this funding will cover the remainder amount needed to construct it. We're actually looking at getting this ready for bid later this year, so this is a kind of a warning for all of you. Keep it out, keep an eye out for it. And then the goal is to construct it in early spring so that we're completed by summer time, ready for next fall. So, yeah. And then moving on to the Mill Creek Little Property Flood Plane Reconnection. We're good at our long titles. So Little Property, let me just start by saying, we call it the Little Property. It's not a Little Property. The previous owner was the Little Family. I know you've all heard that before, but really want to make sure. So Little Property is located, you can see the map on the left-hand side, that shows the current condition of the area, right next door to the area we just described on Woodford. It's just north of James Street, just to the east of Woodford Avenue, near Kent Memorial Park, just north of Mill Creek Middle School. So presently, Mill Creek is very linear in this area. It's straight through this site, and you'll notice it's actually right behind a number of homes on Woodford Avenue. That's really not the ideal creek channel we want to see out there, not only for flood concerns, but also for just a natural creek channel. It's not really what you want to see. So what we're proposing to do is effectively meander the creek channel through the site, make it a little bit more natural. That's the image that you see on the right-hand side. The blue is the relocated creek channel. We're going to have some additional tendrils out there. That's one aspect of the project. We really want to make sure we get it away from those homes out on Woodford. We'll be adding a lot more flood storage capacity out there. It's going to be a lot more natural. We're going to have wood out there, native plants. The colors you see on the image on the right-hand side show some of the different planting palettes we'll see out there. So this funding will go towards supporting that project. We're still getting permits for it. We're getting very close. The goal is to try and construct that next summer. So if that's just in the pipeline. And then to break out how this money comes into play, so every year, the Flood Control District levies funds in support of their work, but then they turn around and take 10.23% of that allocation and return it to the cities that participate in the program. Every year, it's roughly around that $6 million, and so the city of Kent allocation is usually within that 22 or 20, 220,000-ish. This year, it's $229,027. So we're proposing to take that amount and split it between both projects. And with that, and, oh, I'm sorry, we have applied for this project. We did submit applications at the beginning of this month. We should find out later this, later this year, likely in November. That's usually the timeframe we hear, so, yeah. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Questions? Comments? Getting good money or free money in? I would gladly give up the 229 to get over $6 million. I would gladly give up the 229 to get over 6 million. And again, you guys have done a great job with grants and designs.
Just to clarify, I wish it was 6 million. It is, they, they, the amount that they take and return to cities is the 6 million. The amount we'll receive is 229.
229.
Someday, I hope I'll be bringing it to you.
Well, all the grants that you do bring throughout that, you and the department bring throughout the year. And recently, we've even had some where we didn't have to give back any money at all. We didn't have to contribute to the pot. So there's nothing else. This was information only, so that's it for us.
I still like the 6 million better, Councilmember Fenter.
One day, awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. All right. With that, we are at the end of our meeting. We'll see you all at 5:15 for council workshop. We are adjourned.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, October 15. We have two items on our agenda. First, 2025-2026 biennial budget, and we have our Finance Director Paula Painter here. Welcome.
Great. Thank you very much, Council President Corr, Mayor Ralph, and members of City Council. We are at our fourth workshop on the budget, our final workshop on the budget. So it'll be great to get through the last of these questions. So we're gonna go through, I did receive some new questions between our last meeting and this meeting, so I've added those to this presentation. And then we'll go over the timeline like we do every time. But what we're gonna start off with is where we left off last week. And we had talked about the increase in BNO tax, particularly the gross retailing receipts, the cap. Right now, we had five different scenarios that we could look at. And the first scenario is a keep-as-is, that's how it is in 2024, with a cap of $20 million. The proposed 2025-26 budget includes Scenario B, where we increase that cap from $20 million to $25 million. And CPI would be applied to that from each year moving forward. We disregarded Option C because that just really didn't make a lot of sense to increase that, where it really wasn't making much of a big difference, and it would be super complicated. The other two viable options were Scenario D and E. So with Scenario D, we would have the maximum cap at $20 million, like it is today. And another cap, when a business would reach $100 million or more, they would be taxable on all of their retailing grocery receipts. And then finally, with a maximum cap of $25 million, unless they reach that $100 million in which they'd be capped on all of their grocery receipts. And we talked about how much additional revenue that would bring in. One of the things that I've been asked for, for a couple of times, and I've kind of been figuring out how I can share this information with you in a way that is protecting our business owners out there, but at least giving you some information to be able to make a knowledgeable decision on what to do with this. So companies U, V, W, X, Y, and Z, I gave you a few to look at. These are businesses within our city that are either a national chain or a local business. And if you look in this third column over, it says total retail. That is, how much do they have in retail sales? And just so you know, to protect the innocent, I did change the number slightly, but I wanted to at least give you guys some ballpark-ish ideas of what all of these scenarios look like. So again, Scenario A is going to be the 2024 currently, what are we doing? B is how it's in the budget, the proposed budget now. D is the 20 million max, and then E is 25 million max. But D and E, if you reach that $100,000, or excuse me, $100 million, you'd be taxed on it all. So what it shows is what they would owe for the retailing portion of their BNO tax. Please remember that some people have multiple portions that they do pay. So this would be their retailing portion. Companies V and X are your local businesses, so these are not the big national chains. And you can look across, if you look at V, they have 30 million in retail sales. X has 80 million in retail sales. And then if you look at all of the scenarios, you could see what it would be that they would be paying in retail grocery receipts tax. Some of our more, the larger national chains, they're bringing in a lot more money. Some of them are, not all of them. But we do have some that are bringing in a lot more money, so you could see how they would change. We have one at the very top. It would, no matter what scenario you would choose, they would be paying $20,000 or $22,000 a year. But then another national chain could be paying anywhere from $20,000 to $150,000 per year.
Councilmember Voice?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to make sure we go nice and slow and understand. I want to focus right now on the local business, right? So we got V and X, right?
Yes.
So today, we go with V. They are paying 20K, Scenario A is what they're paying today, 20K, right?
Yes.
And then if we go with Option D, there's no impact to them today.
Correct.
With this change. And we go with Option E, then there'll be an impact to the business.
Correct.
Right. And then the same thing with X, same type of scenario. And I just say, you know, for me, I just, I don't know if you're talking through this yet, but that's, to me, is important, you know, for our local businesses paying taxes, and they're probably doing more than their share. It's important to me that I don't want to have any more impact to them. And I think what we talked about earlier in this whole scenario was the national chains, right? Who's not paying their portion. So I know, and you, for the first one, you, right? So they're paying 20, but between Option D and E is an extra 2K, is what I'm seeing, right? So to me, I am, I'm more concerned with the local, right? Making sure that, you know, we're still going through a tough economy, right? And I wouldn't hate it, even though it's a small portion, but every nickel and dime have an impact. For me, I would prefer doing less impact to our local business and really just focus on our national. Because that's originally what our thought process was, anyway. So that's just my thought around this here.
Thank you, Councilmember Voice. Councilmember Choutner, please.
Thank you, Madam President. So going back to the options. When we first had this discussion, D was not introduced to us, so it wasn't anything that we were considering?
E.
E.
Wait, D was there, E was not there. Okay. Well, can you go back to that?
Other one, yes. Sorry about that.
Well, so we were looking at B originally, correct?
Yeah.
Correct. And then, then we had D to consider. D was, yes.
Yes, it was added, and then the next one, then the E was added.
Yeah, okay. So it wasn't in the original conversation, is what I'm trying to say. And I have voiced my opinion on preferring D, and kind of based on what Councilmember Voice is also saying. We have these businesses, these small businesses and local businesses that have been paying their share all along. And I feel like, you know, we're leaving that money on the table, so we're looking at this option to go, to add these big retailers into it. And I just, in a way, I feel like greedy's not the right word, but I, I feel like we're picking up that money that we've left out there, and I think we need to be fair and responsible to those businesses that have been paying it all along. And I think we capture that in Option D versus Option E. So that is why I'm preferring that option.
Any other comments? Councilmember Michelle, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Paula, aren't we raising, all our other taxes go up by CPI?
That is correct. Well, most of our others go up by CPI.
But this one has?
Of our other fees, excuse me, sorry.
This one has never gone up. This maximum cap has never, since 2019?
Yes, that's correct.
And then this is supposed to go into, in 2026, this is supposed to start, or this 2025?
And Paula, I remember seeing something that we were planning on raising 20 cap to 25 cap in 2025, right? Or was that?
So the original from 2019, what was adopted was going to be increasing the square footage tax from 36 cents per square foot to 48 cents per square foot. So that's already in the ordinance and already going to be in place. And then with the proposed budget, we had an increase in manufacturing from a rate of .001 to a rate of .00125, and then also we had the increase in the cap there.
Yeah, so that was gonna be in the original budget?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? Do you have a preference, Councilmember?
My preference is D for the same reasons, you know? And even the small national businesses, they are protected in that plan, while the larger ones who can pay and support more their fair share are the ones who are major, have the major impact from that. So D.
Councilmember Boyd?
Yes, I also agree with Councilmember Fincher, and Voice, and Choutner that we shouldn't go with E. We should go with D. I mean, because these people have been paying their fair share, you know, for this long period of time. And I think, yeah, D, I would stick with, stay with D.
Thank you. Councilmember Voice, please.
Yes, Madam President. The other portion, I went, go with that too, just with the funding, right? I think we're talking about like a new police officer, right? So that was the other piece too, what we're doing now versus waiting, you know, and save this money. Because with the BNO tax and all that, with the raising of that, we're not gonna get that money tomorrow, right?
That's correct.
So we, I will hope that we as a council too, let's not spin who we don't have, but I think Councilmember Shory definitely support you this year, and the fact that, you know, we can revisit this at the mid-by-year budget. And kind of, I don't know what the right word is, but whatever that word is, that when that time comes, I think we should look at that and see a new officer. If everything is in place the way it should be, then I would strongly support us bringing a new officer to pay for that. So that's the other portion of that equation.
Thank you. And Councilmember Michelle, please.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Councilmember Voice. I do prefer E, but, you know, I was kind of, I will, I'll go, I understand your point, so I respect that. And at the biennial budget adjustment next year, we can talk about it again.
Thank you. It looks like you have your answer, Paula. I think looking at these numbers definitely helped make a decision for council here. And I think I just, just want to say that thank you for having these conversations, and we can move on to the next question.
All right. So I'm gonna skip number 14 and 16 because it had to do with the officer question. So since we have direction on that, we'll just go ahead and move on to question 17. What sort of items are in the emergency repairs? Are they actually emergencies, and why is 2027 so much lower? So this is, this is a line item that's within the facilities budget, and the...
Tell us where we are in the book, what page?
Page 89. I apologize. All right. So there is a bucket of money that's available for, to be able to fund different projects that need to be done for our facilities. And when we start looking at what kind of items come out of these emergencies, there are things like repairs to alarm panels, reader boards, light pole replacements, gates and fence replacements. So these are things that come up. They need repaired for, for whatever reason. The overall, I'm sorry, just give me a second here. 2027, that amount is lower because the dollars that are available are going to a roof repairs project, which is also listed there, and you can see that number's a bit higher. Okay, so question 18. What goes into setup and recurring costs? So every time you see a new employee below that line item, you're gonna see setup and recurring costs. Now, the setup and recurring costs vary depending on the position that you're looking at. So with the, most positions, I'm gonna show you one that we look at for police positions, but for most positions, they work through just the general things, like, okay, do they need to have a workstation? If so, is one available, or we have to create one or modify one? Are they gonna need a chair, a telephone, computer, et cetera? So all of the things that they might need to do their job. There's some, some of those things that are one-time costs, but then you have ongoing costs. So if you have a person who needs to be able to have a cellphone, well, there's monthly charges for that cellphone. So that's what's included in those setup and recurring costs that you would see for most general positions. When it comes to police positions, we do have to look at some other things in addition to that. So if they're a commissioned officer, they're obviously going to need uniforms, armament, equipment, belea academy, whatever it might be there, as well as the corrections officer. They do have some additional things that, that an average employee of the city wouldn't necessarily have. So we do have a couple of different lists that we go off of. So when you start looking at those costs, each department looks at what each of those individuals might need to be able to do their job. Moving on to question 19. What are the general fund expenditures moving to the human services fund? So there's $225,000 that's being slated to move from the general fund to the human services fund. And what's gonna be happening is we're gonna be doing the review of historical activities related to homelessness, housing, and mental and behavioral health services to ensure compliance with Washington state law for the use of 1950 funds. And we're gonna take a portion of those funds that could be used for mental health services, substance abuse treatment, and housing-related services for people with low incomes and those experiencing homelessness. And there, by reviewing the current activities, staff will identify opportunities to shift the resources from the general fund to the 1590 fund, maximizing the impact of these funds and addressing critical housing and behavioral health needs. All right. What are all the memberships under admin, the admin council budget, and what are their costs? So these are approximate budget costs. I'm not gonna say this is gonna be the exact dollar amount of the bill that comes to us, but it should be within the ballpark of all of these items. We have memberships with the Association of Washington Cities, Cities of Climate Cold Lab, the Chamber of Commerce, the Puget Sound Air Quality, Puget Sound Regional Council, Sound Cities Association, US Conference of Mayors. And then there's other memberships as well. And those other memberships that fall under admin are things for the community, for example, the communications team, for the clerk's office, things like, and for our race and equity division. So that'll be things like 3CMA, Race Forward, Municipal Clerks Association, public records officers, and other international programs. I did not list every one because they wouldn't fit very nicely on the screen, but I at least highlighted some of the, the larger ones there.
Paula, these are costs mostly per capita, right? I think, at least AWC and SCA.
Yeah, a lot of these are based on, there's a formula that's, that is handed out to us, and they provide us with that information. Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. What exactly is in the city arts program? So the city's arts program was established in 1985 with the intent to expand the opportunity for Kent residents to experience art in public places and create a more visually pleasing humane environment. The ordinance provides $2 per capita each budget year. Any, or it, so the budget's established, but unspent funds are maintained in an art fund and carried forward at the end of each year. So we saw the, on the one page where we, we saw the arts fund, and that art fund dollar is going down, but we know our population is going up, so the total program dollars are still larger. So we have 50% of two positions that are paid for out of the general fund for this program. And the 2% per capita covers those dollars first. So we have $280,800 for the budget. Right now, we have just over $100,000 that are not being used within that general fund, and that's what we transfer into the arts project fund to be used for future items. And there is actually a city art plan that is created. It is a one- and five-year plan. It's created annually and is adopted by the city council. It is created with park staff, but with the consultation of the Parks Art Commission. And I would be happy to delve more into that if you guys would like me to. All right. Okay, how close are we to get the 100% car per officer program? And are new recruits also getting vehicles? So the car per officer program will not be completed probably until the end of 2027-28. So the reason for this is, as we add new officers, we are adding cars. We have a bucket of money to be able to pay for those cars. So those cars come from the school zone cameras. And I don't know if you remember this from one of our recent presentations, school go, school zone camera revenues are going down. So our bucket of money isn't quite as large. Also, there are times when we need to replace a police vehicle sooner than we may have anticipated replacing it. And so we have to tap into those funds as well, and that slows down the program. But ultimately, there are about three more patrol cars and one unmarked car that would still need to finalize the program after 2025 and 26.
So, end of 2027-ish?
Yeah, about the end of 2027. And again, it does depend on, I just want to caveat that, because it really depends on how much revenue are we gonna keep getting in from those school zone cameras? And what is gonna be the need to replace vehicles that are damaged in the line of duty?
Councilmember Voice?
Thank you, Madam President. Just to follow, so we have some other officer here today. We still have some in the academy, but the one that is here today on job duty, they have their own car, right? For the most part? Does that be an accurate statement?
Um, and I'm gonna turn over to the chief to answer that, because I don't have all the details to that question.
And I'm assuming also we all have the older cars too, right? So I'm assuming everybody either have a new car or old car, I'm guessing.
Yes, so to answer your question, when our new officers come out for a time, they are using loaner cars, which is why you'll see five to 10 cars in the bullpen. Looks like there's a bunch of police officers doing nothing. Those are our pool cars and the, and our rookies, so to speak, take them out. Right before, depending on when our inventory comes in, because you guys know we still been, we have been dealing with supply chain issues still with police cars. But generally speaking, before they get off probation, so before their first complete year, they get assigned their car.
How many officers we have on active duty today? I don't get quite a few in the academy. How many we have on duty today?
So, right now, we have deployed 160, so give or take one or two, depending on where we're at, but last number is 164 of the 167 positions. We have one conditional offer that's ready to be signed, and one position open currently. In the academy, I believe we are caught up with everybody that's in the academy right now.
So Chief, does that mean right now we still, still like five cars behind? Or is it just everybody that's on duty right now has a car?
Everybody except for our newest officers, so maybe somewhere in the ballpark of six of our officers have a car assigned.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chief. That was the end of our questions. So before we get to the timeline, well, but maybe I'll start this off. This is supposed to be our final workshop. And with that in mind, this is a great opportunity. If you guys have any lingering questions you'd really like answers to, we would be happy to have, are happy to answer those. And I actually have all of my peers here in the audience to help me out if you ask a trick question.
Councilmember Michelle, do you have a question?
Thank you. I'm just wondering, can we go back to question 17, please? And then I'm wondering if Councilmember Choutner wanted to say anything more about it? Oh, wait, that's not the right question, so sorry. Maybe the one before, 16, maybe? Yes, 16.
Oh, 16. Yes.
Thank you.
Well, the, I mean, I think we answered this question. The only thing that I thought was also really important is this money is still coming out of our reserve. It's not like with this BNO, we're getting extra money in. We're still borrowing money out of our reserve. So I just think that, kind of in our minds earmarking some of that money that's gonna still be in the reserve to use towards that discussion next year was kind of what I was getting at with this question. But it's not like bringing in this BNO, all of a sudden we're gonna have more money in our pocket. It just means we have to borrow less from our savings.
So, yeah, so basically, having this conversation or mid-biennial budget, and making sure that we do have that one additional position we talked about if there's funding. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Fincher?
I just want to thank you. I mean, you've answered all of our questions, whether here, on the phone, and your team. I mean, our employees are great citywide, but your team to be able to answer on the spot while you're on the phone or to be able to look up that information, very impressive and very appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, any other questions or comments? No?
All right. So what's gonna happen next is my team is gonna go back. We're gonna make this modification based on the change in BNO. We're gonna go with Option D and put that in the budget, so there'll be some modification to the numbers that you've originally seen. They're gonna work on putting together the packet, the ordinance for the budget, the property tax ordinance that we need to adopt as well. We're gonna bring all of that to committee of the whole on November 5th. So we'll have that packet ready to go by that point in time. Once we get the nod to be able to send it through to council on the 5th, we won't be making any more changes after that until, or at all, and then we'll bring you... until, at all, and then we'll bring it, bringing it on December 10th for adoption with the council at the council meeting in December. All right, and that's all that I have.
All right, thank you so much, Paula.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you to your team for all the hard work and we'll see you again soon. All right, next up, we have 2025, 2026 Human Services Funding Overview. And we have Marina Hansen. Welcome.
Thank you. Essentially, we just wanted to come and share with you. I'm sure you've all seen in your budget book, I think it's pages 169 through 171, the list of nonprofits, programs that will be funding for 2025, 2026. And we wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to share with you everything that kind of goes into the process of actually coming to that list. In terms of our investments, these are two-year numbers here. So cut it in half if you want to look at it per year. Generally, through this process, we're just allocating the general fund dollars and our CDBG public services funds. But this year, we were able to also add some funding from $1,590 for programs that fit into that bucket. And then I just wanted to touch on the fact that we do still have some programs that are receiving ARPA funds through 2025. And there are two programs that we're funding with general fund dollars in 2025, 2026. And we made adjustments accordingly to those programs to ensure that we're not overlapping, just for transparency's sake. I think you all know ShareOne app is the regional collaboration through which organizations apply to us for funding. So there are 16 cities in Northeast and South King County. And it's a really great process primarily for the organizations. So they're only having to submit one application to the various cities that they are providing services to. There's clearly also some efficiencies on the city staff side, but ultimately, there's a lot of benefit for the nonprofits to be able to make that one application. It also works on the other end when they're submitting reports. They submit one billing voucher, one report, and we all can download it from the other side. So it's a great collaboration and partnership with those other cities. This is just a quick overview of our application process timeline. It's really a year-long process once we go external with it. So the first pre-application workshop was all the way back in October of last year. And here we are today where you're actually seeing the funded organizations. In terms of the workshops and technical assistance that we provide, this is something that really keeps growing year to year. And this is where I really want to acknowledge the work that my staff does. I don't do a ton of this, I have to admit, but my staff is amazing in terms of how much outreach and engagement they do with the community and the nonprofits who want to apply to the city of Kent for funding. That first workshop that we held back in October, that was really geared towards organizations who have never applied through ShareOne app for funding before. So it's really an early opportunity for them to hear about the process and learn about what types of information they have to have ready for that application. So they get a little bit of a head start, so they're not so overwhelmed and they can ask as many questions as they have. We also held a City of Kent-specific application workshop. And then we have two regional workshops. One was here in this very room. And then we had the other one up in Redmond. And you can see how many folks attended that. We had about 100 people in person and then another 50 who attended virtually. And then on the right, those are kind of above and beyond things that my staff really committed to. So right out the gate, they established in-person and online technical assistance opportunities. So they printed them and it was really a good way for people who had questions to be able to just casually drop in and ask those of staff and also to just participate and hear what other organizations were asking. Some people attended every single one of them just so that they could hear. And we held those both in the morning, in the afternoon, and after hours in the evening, just to ensure that, you know, people who had other full-time jobs would be able to also participate. And then my team just had a lot of individual one-on-one phone calls. Like if anybody had questions or wanted technical assistance, they made sure to make themselves available to anyone who wanted to talk things through. Ultimately, at the end of the day, we had 112 agencies apply to Kent for funding. We had 151 applications. So you can tell some of the organizations apply for multiple programs. And that $7 million figure is by far, in a way, a record funding request for us. It, but by far outweighed what we even anticipated. And we knew it was going to be big, but we didn't know it was going to be that big. 28 of those organizations had never applied to Kent before. 12 of them, we had never heard of before, never had worked with them before. We always know, people like to know how many of these organizations are in Kent specifically. 46 of them have like physical offices here or work at a site specifically in Kent. We had 13 new programs that were approved by our commission for funding. And six of those were new agencies that we are not currently contracted with. This is just a list of the new programs that are funded in case you were interested. It's kind of all over the board, a little bit of everything. The ones that are asterisks are ones that we have never funded before. So some of these are programs that are new for that specific organization. You know, we may have funded them for a different program in the past or we may have worked with them before and hadn't been funding them in the last cycle or two. So quite a few new programs that we're adding for 2025, 2026. In terms of outreach and engagement, this is something that we've talked to you about separately before too. We just want to make sure that every cycle, we're learning more about how we can better outreach in the community and how we can ensure that everybody who might want to access these funds know they're there, how to apply, when it's happening, who to talk to. This is, I'm not going to read everything on this, but we wanted to like give you an example of kind of the breadth of where we communicate. So a lot of it obviously is still in print, but we also announce it at meetings. We put it out through the mayor's newsletter. We have a lot of just distribution lists and email. We use the eGov. We post it on websites. We talk about it everywhere we possibly can. And then there's also just a huge mailing list that we get through ShareOne app. So anybody that's ever signed into that program online, we have their email and we kind of blast them and annoy them, I'm sure, with funding notice after funding notice after funding notice. Kind of after the application closed, as we're reviewing things, there's always some common themes where we need to continue to work with the nonprofits to improve. There's a lot of challenges still for folks in filling out the budget pages, service units, outcomes, and then financials. These are things that we'll hear from the agencies, like what their challenges were, but we'll also work at the staff level and figuring out, like are there ways we can ask the questions differently? Are there more videos that we can post on the ShareOne app page to kind of walk people through? We have a few tutorials on the webpage already and people like those, but maybe there's more opportunities for us to make sure that we're getting the information that we need from the nonprofits when they submit that information for us. Where we are at now, so we're kind of in the after phase. We are working on ensuring that we're getting feedback from everybody that was involved in the process. So we've talked already somewhat with the commission on their side of it in terms of the review process that they went through and how that worked for them. We also, our team has been meeting with some of the guest reviewers that we brought in. And we've had a couple one-on-one meetings with them. A couple of them attended our last commission meeting to just give us feedback on what they thought about the process and things that they think might improve it for next time. Just trying to hear from them, like what other trainings might be helpful. It's a, it's a big process. It's a lot to ask of people. Councilmember Michelle has sat through several now, so she knows. It's, it's never the same. We're always working to improve it. There's a survey that goes out to everybody that worked on the application in ShareOne app. We've already got some of that feedback back. And then we just talk to the agencies and hear from them. This is, I just pulled a couple of the responses. We just got this information on Friday. So just hearing from agencies who went through the process about how they felt it was compared to the last cycle, whether they were able to find the information that they needed, resources and information. I went through, I read every single comment that we got back. And by and large, it's really positive. I mean, people, again, it's really only the people that responded to the survey. So there's, I'm sure, an element of folks that were missing. But we do read through it. We do try to listen and hear from them what might make the process better next time. And then we really flip into the commission planning side at this point. So again, incorporating that feedback and recommendations, things that we know we need to work on, that we've heard from the commission, doing, you know, more work, like setting the historical context up in front so that they understand the human services fund, what it is, what it can be used for, standardizing our orientation and onboarding so that our commissioners, because we get new commissioners, you know, throughout the year. And so some people might just be brand new onto the commission and trying to like get everybody into the same space where they're comfortable with this process and everything that entails is a lot of work. So really trying to standardize that. And we've talked about building an online resource library for commissioners so that they have access to this information that we provide them. They know where to go get it year-round because it really and truly is a year-round process. We just don't think of it that way. So we're trying to kind of shift our thought process to think of it more as an ongoing, even though it might not be an application cycle year, it's the year where we're gearing up for the next one. And then just being really thoughtful about involving commissioners in our agenda planning. I'm not going to go super into detail on either one of these. It's just more of the work that we're going to be doing over this next year with our commission to really ensure that they are ready. Because they do, I mean, they're the ones that ultimately make the funding recommendations. And we want them to have like the best possible information about our community and the needs that we have when they go into this process. One of the things that we did this year that was new is we had a simulated funding review activity that I think was overall pretty positively received. We've never done it before, but we essentially made every single commissioner and reviewer and staff go through the process of like, okay, here, here's all of our human services funding. You allocate it. Where would you put the funds? Like who would you fund? How much would you fund? That was really interesting and we, it was new, so we didn't really have it refined in terms of how we were going to use it. But it was really, it made people be really thoughtful. And every year when we go through this process, there are some people that are way more open and ready to shout out numbers and who they think should be funded and why. And there's other people that are really quiet. This, we realized, is a great way to ensure that everybody has a voice. So we're going to continue to refine that and figure out how to build that into the process so that everybody has their chance to say, this is, you know, based on everything that we've learned, based on reviewing the applications, this is what we think we should do with our human services funds. And then using that as the building point to going into the actual allocation process. Oh, and then I meant to mention too, with the equity and inclusion piece, that's one that we also need to do a better job about incorporating into our process. We always do have like a big training leading up to the application cycle itself, like trying to get everybody refreshed and on the same page. But really, again, this is work that we do all year round. We just don't call it that. So commissioners sometimes think, oh, why do we wait to the last second to train on all of this? We're really doing it year-round. So figuring out how to just embed that in our work such that they understand that this is ongoing and we're constantly trying to ensure that we are working through that equity lens with every allocation process. And really, that's all, I know that was super quick, but I just wanted to make sure we left time for questions. If there's anything you want me to go back and talk more about. But really, we just wanted to make sure that you guys had that refresher. You know how we got to those organizations. There's already concepts that we're talking through for next time as we hear from reviewers and commissioners. It's exciting. I've been through this process many, 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 many times now. And I, I'm, this one was really great. It was super thoughtful. Commissioners and reviewers did a ton of work. Everybody read the applications, thoughtful review. It was, I was impressed with it. Again, staff doesn't make these recommendations, but I just wanted to share with you all of the work that the commission and the agencies too did to get to where we are.
Thank you, Marina. We have quite a few comments or questions. I'm not sure. Councilmember boys, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Just one quick question. You might have mentioned it, you know, might have missed it. So there's two processes, the application process that they get it, then you get the funding, right? So once they get the funding, if there is another process that we do like a report out and what that's like was, how you track it, the funding that they use and accountability and behind that?
Correct. Yep, where staff, once the budget is approved, staff starts to negotiate the contract and scope of work with each organization. And it's based on what they applied to us and, you know, prorated essentially with where they actually landed with their funding allocation. But then everything is reported on a quarterly basis through ShareOne app. So they will bill us. So we, for the most part, everything we do is by reimbursement. So they have to meet certain expectations with their contract. They have to meet certain numbers served and also specific services. We just call them performance measures. And then they also report on their outcomes annually.
Just one follow, have there been, you've been on this many, 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 many years. Have there been any time where there was misappropriation of funding, where things didn't work out as they said? And what do you normally do about stuff like that?
Yeah, that does not happen very often. More, not more, not even very frequently with that. Sometimes organizations aren't able to meet their performance measures. So there have been instances where we prorate what we pay them. We, you know, or we don't pay them for the fourth quarter because they didn't meet their full measures. We have canceled contracts in the past. It's not something that we do lightly and we haven't done it very often. But if an organization simply is not meeting the contractual expectations, we will cancel a contract. And then we did have one possible misappropriation of funds incident with an organization we were funding through CDBG that took, took a lot of work and effort and meaning. We had not paid them for services. So we didn't get into a position where they had to pay anything back to us. But we did make decisions not to pay out their contract, even though some other cities did end up paying. But there was enough questions for us at the staff level, especially since we were using federal funds. Just to be safe and cautious, we chose not to pay out that contract. It's super rare. The organizations, you know, have to go through audit processes and they have financial reviews on their own. We get copies of those. So we're pretty closely in tune with what's happening at the organization level. But yeah, it, yeah.
Councilmember Michelle, followed by Chutner, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Marina, thank you so much for your presentation. And to you and your staff, I see Lori and Christine here. Thank you so much for all the behind-the-scenes work that goes into making sure that our commissioners, who are volunteers, have everything that they need to make this decision. To our commissioners, thank you so much. You put a lot of time into this. You know, we get probably 20 to 30 applications each to review and it can take 30 minutes for each application just to read it once over. And then there are several meetings after that to have discussions. So it, there's a lot of time and effort that goes into this. And Marina, I appreciate you and your team for always being open to suggestions on how to do things differently and always changing and evolving every year to make it, the process better and the best that it can be. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Chutner.
Thank you, Council President. I will echo what Councilmember Michelle said. Thank you very much for all your hard work. Thank you for serving on this commission. It's really great to see all of these new groups being served. Will you come back at some point and report to us on what those groups are doing or what they're using their funds for?
Yes, that's also on our work plan. We know we need to do a better job of coming back on the other end. Like we get so excited about this is who we're funding, but we know it's also important.
It's great to see new names on there.
Output, the, the impact.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Frencher, please.
And can I just want to say, with all of that work, the in-the-field part is also quite important. And the amount of time that your team spends actually in the field with the different agencies and meeting folks, really admirable. Thank you.
And I'll say, thank you, Marina. Thank you to your team, Lori and Christine. Thank you for being here and all the work that you do in making sure that our community is taken care of through nonprofits. I do have feedback that I have heard from the community. I see that King County is not part of this app, and there are some organizations who get funding from the county, and then, they get the funding from the cities. And it's the same program they're working on for both places and getting funding, and they're giving the same report.
Yeah.
At their places. So, the work is not really, they're not really doing as much work for the funding, but they're giving the report of what they basically used it for. I don't, I'm sure it doesn't happen very often, but that's the feedback I have gotten. So, I don't know if there's a way to hot it that better, or if there's another, I don't know how that would be, but just something I wanted to share.
It's been many, many years, but there was a point where King County like entertained the concept of joining with us with this application process, but they don't, I mean, they're just, they're kind of on their own plane with it, and they don't always, they don't even always go out with a competitive cycle. We do try to coordinate with the county with our application in terms of, like, when we look at things like demographics, if we're considering changing what we're asking for with demographics collections or things like that, we do look at what the county's asking. We try to be very careful not to ask for different things. But in terms of the billing voucher and service report, I feel like it's pretty streamlined to the point now where, I mean, there are some of the cities too that will, they will actually, if there's multiple cities who are funding the same organization, they will do an MOU with each other, and they will only be reporting to one city versus putting their numbers in for each separate city. I mean, they still do eventually. That's where, that's actually why Kent doesn't participate because we really value the relationships with the agencies, and so, that's kind of why we like to maintain partnering with organizations the way that we do right now. We haven't really been willing to streamline it any more than it already is just because it's a, it's a way for us to get to know the nonprofits. It's a way for them to get to know us. It builds that line of communication. And when we did the MOU before, we felt like we lost that. So, I mean, we can definitely continue to try to bring King County in and be more in alignment. But yeah, it's a, it's a challenge. I get that. It's hard. We, we are always looking for ways to make it more streamlined and efficient for the nonprofits, so we'll definitely continue to talk about that.
All right, I think that is it, and no questions or comments? All right, thank you so much. Thank you for being here, your presentation. We look forward to seeing you again with some progress.
Thank you.
With that, we are at the end of our meeting, and we'll see you all at 7 o'clock for council meeting. We are adjourned.